Good morning. Today is Monday, June the sixth. And the time is nine o'clock. The board is in session to conduct this weekly open business meeting. All three commissioners are with us. I'd ask everyone that's here to identify yourself for the record. We'll start over here.
Jennifer Hawley, clerk's office.
Shawna Krantz, Holland's Bites and Brews.
Randy Krantz.
Jessica Arowet, juvenile services.
Richard Mayer, juvenile services.
Sarah Hudson, juvenile services.
Mike Clark, Ada County Operations.
And Madam Commissioner Bruce Crisco, operations.
Julie Chirky, Mary Group.
Tom Perkins, Ada County Procurement.
Brad Smith, the assessor's office.
Heather Wood, they're recording.
Elizabeth Duncan, communications.
Beth Mon, Ada County Treasurer.
Tom McGrane, clerk.
Thank you. Inasmuch as today is June the sixth, I thought we should make note that today is a major day in the history of the United States of America. Today is the seventy-eighth anniversary of D-Day. I can vividly remember the fourth anniversary, I know many of you can't, but I can, when Ronald Reagan stood on the beaches of, or stood on the, on the, on the Point, Point du Hoc, and he, and he said, he had a speech that was just memorable, and it moved the nation. These are the boys of Point du Hoc. These are the men who took the cliffs. These are the heroes. And the United States of America led by General Dwight Eisenhower basically saved the world from tyranny, and we need to always remember that, how our greatest generations stepped forward, and we, we live under the freedoms that they provided to us. And I thought, today's the sixth we should remember that. So, remember that. Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, are there changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay, we have the pleasure of opening our meeting this morning with an employee recognition. I'd ask Mr. Davidson if he would read the recognition.
All right, Mr. Chair, this is for Sarah Horton, twenty years of service to Ada County.
It's Sarah Hudson.
Hudson, okay. Sarah Hudson, sorry. After twenty years, we get it right. Sarah began her career with Ada County in two thousand and two, working as a secretary for victim witness coordinators, which she considers to be a great introduction to the county. This was a position she loved and felt she was able to learn a lot. Sarah briefly left the county for a few months. Upon her return, she joined the juvenile services team. Since joining juvenile services, Sarah has held many positions, which include court clerk, senior clerk, account clerk one and two, and her current position, administrative specialist two. Sarah's positive attitude and ability to adapt to the ever-changing environment at juvenile services has made her a valued member of our team. Sarah never hesitates to take on additional tasks to help the team in any way she can. She is extremely thoughtful and creative, which has helped contribute to a supportive environment for our staff and the youth we serve. In Sarah's free time, she enjoys spending time with her son, Logan, and creating heartfelt crafts, which she often shares with her coworkers to brighten their day. Congratulations, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah. Is there any one of her coworkers who wish to make a comment or say anything before we give the award? Can if you'd like.
Sure. We, I, I'm Jessica, and, you know, Sarah has, is such a great member of our team. She holds our team together. Anytime we need anything, she is there with a smile on her face, which just makes it a really great environment to work in. So, we are grateful for her years of service.
Okay.
I want to know if you bought any of your crafts.
Ah, today. I'll send you one.
Okay.
Well, if you'd like to step forward, and we'll, we'll buy where the flags are, and we'll, we'll, the commission will give you the award.
Is Allison not here today?
Allison is at another meeting currently with some of the other counties.
Okay. Here you go.
Here we go.
Well, Sarah, on behalf of the citizens of Ada County, I wish to thank you for your twenty years of service, and give you this plaque.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Appreciate your work.
I didn't mention we have on the bridge with us Bethany Kelly and Thomas Hott and Mr. Rutherford. Okay. May I have a motion to, to remove unfinished business from the table?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
Second that.
Okay. You for the motion, and favor, or on favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. First up is a final ranking and award recommendation for RFP two-two-zero-three-two, Ada County Medical TPA.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the evaluation team for RFP two-two-zero-three-two, the Ada County Medical TPA, has completed the evaluations. I would just like to mention that the evaluation team went through an extensive effort to evaluate these proposals. We had a group evaluation meeting and to get to an initial ranking list, and then we invited the top two proposers to interview with the evaluation team. After the interviews, we had a clear number-one ranked firm, and we had that number-one ranked firm submit a best and final offer to us. And this best and final offer really just kind of solidified their commitment to customer service. Additionally, in that best and final offer response to us, the firm gave us a better administrative rate as well.
Oh, good.
So, a little better rate. So, we are ready to submit an award recommendation letter for your consideration.
Okay. Do you read the letter for the record?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
All right. It's a letter dated June sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners, from Ada County Procurement regarding RFP two-two-zero-three-two. Dear members of the board, the evaluation committee has evaluated the responses for RFP two-two-zero-three-two. A final ranking of qualified candidates was determined by evaluation scoring. The final rankings in order of evaluation scoring are as follows. Number one, Regent's Blue Shield of Idaho with a score of one hundred and thirty point six-seven. Number two, Pacific Source Health Plans with a score of one hundred and nineteen point eight-three. Number three, Blue Cross of Idaho with a score of seventy-six point five-zero. And number four, Cigna Health and Life Insurance Company with a score of sixty-one point three-three. It is a recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for RFP two-two-zero-three-two to Regent's Blue Shield of Idaho as a number-one ranked proposer.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Chair, that is our current third-party administrator, so that would make it convenient. We'll go ahead and make a motion to accept the final rankings for RFP two-two-zero-three-two, Ada County Medical Third-Party Administrator, and accept the evaluation committee's recommendation of the award to Regent's in the, with the score of one hundred and thirty point six-seven.
Second that.
Okay. Well, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you.
Does this contract take effect at the first of the year?
It does, October one.
First of fiscal year.
Yeah, first of fiscal year.
Well, next up, we will have award bid number two-two-zero-six-zero, Ada County Jail and PSB Chiller Replacement.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the evaluation team has reviewed the bids received for bid two-two-zero-six-zero, and would like to submit this recommendation for award letter for your consideration.
Please read the, the letter for the, for the record.
I'd be happy to. Letter dated June sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding bid two-two-zero-six-zero. Dear members of the board, after reviewing the bid submitted, it is a recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for bid two-two-zero-six-zero-two, American Chiller Services as the lowest responsive bidder for the total bid amount of two hundred and seventy-six thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Okay. I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to accept the recommendation of the evaluation committee and award bid two-two-zero-six-zero, Ada County Jail and PSB Chiller Replacement, two thousand and twenty-two, to American Chiller.
Chiller.
Chiller Services, in the amount of two hundred and seventy-six thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight.
Second that.
Okay. You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Next up is award bid number two-two-zero-six-one, Ada County Public Safety Building Complex Air Handlers and Boiler Replacement.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the evaluation team for bid two-two-zero-six-one has reviewed the two bids submitted. We would like to submit this letter with the evaluation team's recommendation.
Okay. Please read the record, read the letter for the record.
Be happy to. Letter dated June sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners to, from Ada County Procurement regarding bid two-two-zero-six-one. Dear members of the board, after reviewing the bids submitted, all of the bids came in over budget. Therefore, it is a recommendation of the evaluation group to reject all bids submitted for bid two-two-zero-six-one, and rebid the project at a later date with revised engineering specifications.
Okay.
Do you prefer to do that versus go out to the open market?
We'll have that discussion, something we'll bring up at the budget. We're having certain pieces of equipment that have tripled in price since we started this process. And we did get a three percent increase in our overall budget, but it's not enough to cover the delta that we're experiencing with this bid.
Okay. Do we need a motion on that?
Yes.
Let's have a motion.
I'll move to reject all bids for bid two-two-zero-six-one, Ada County Public Safety Building Complex Air Handlers and Boiler Replacement, two thousand and twenty-two, for being over budget, and rebid the project at a later date with revised engineering plans.
Second.
Okay. You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, Commissioners. Okay, moving on, we have a resolution. I'll open the public hearing on resolution number two-seven-five-eight. Do you want to describe that to us a little briefly?
Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to. So, this is a resolution for the sale of personal property owned by Ada County. This is going to be an auction through Music Auction Services. Auction's going to start June sixteenth. We have several items that we've collected throughout this quarter, and it's time for them to go.
Chairs, cabinets.
Chairs, cabinets, desks. Do we have any further discussion on this issue, on this resolution? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing on resolution number two-seven-five-eight. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve resolution number two-seven-five-eight, as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Motion carries. Okay, we have now, opening of RFQ two-two-zero-six-four, Arpa Design Services for Ada County Juvenile Services Open Space.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Ada County Procurement received three proposals for RFP two-two-zero-six-four, or excuse me, RFQ two-two-zero-six-four. Evan has our Bonfire E-Procurement System queued up, and if you're ready for us to open, we proceed.
We're ready.
So, Mr. Chair, this morning, we're just looking for the name of the proposers.
Okay.
And those should be opening up here in just a second, and when they open, be happy to read those into the record if you'd like.
Okay.
All right. So, there are, are three proposers. The first, the first one is Cushing Terrell, second is KM Engineering LLP, and the third proposer is Lombard Conrad Architects.
Great.
Okay.
You'll need time.
Yes, the evaluation team will need some time to review these proposals, and we would like to request this be tabled for final ranking, and request to enter the negotiations to the June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, open business meeting.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll move to table the final ranking and request to enter the negotiations, RFQ two-two-zero-six-four, Arpa Design Services for Ada County Juvenile Services Outdoor Space to June, June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second that.
Okay. You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, we have review of bids received and award recommendation for Public Works Project fifty to two hundred thousand. Bid number two-two-zero-six-eight, Expo Idaho LED Lighting Upgrade for Large and Small Animal Barns.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Ada County Procurement received one response for bid two-two-zero-six-eight, and would like to submit this letter of the bid received and a recommendation for your consideration.
Okay, thank you. Do you read the letter for the record?
Yes. It's a, a letter dated June sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding bid two-two-zero-six-eight. Dear members of the board, Ada County Procurement received one response for bid two-two-zero-six-eight. The following is the name of the bidder and the bid amount submitted. The bidder is Pacific Source Electric LLC, and their bid amount was a hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars. After reviewing the bids submitted, it is a recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for bid two-two-zero-six-eight to Pacific Source LLC as the lowest responsive bidder for the total bid amount of one hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars. And, Mr. Chair, I should just make, mention that this did come in over budget for this one.
Well, that's good. Okay. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would move to accept the recommendation of the evaluation committee and award bid two-two-zero-six-eight, Expo Idaho LED Lighting Upgrade for Large and Small Animal Barns, two thousand and twenty-two, to Pacific Source LLC, in the amount of a hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars.
Second that.
Okay. You've heard the motion. Is there further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we have licenses, and we'll begin with the peddler's licenses. Is there any discussion?
No, Mr. Chair, I looked over the contract, and I'm good to move to approve one peddler's list or licenses listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
Okay. You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 We'll now take up catering permit that the sheriff's office is recommending denial. Would, would Heather like to, Heather here?
I can speak to it. Yeah. This is coming from Development Services Recommendation Sheriff's Office. The facility, it's not the caterer, it's the facility, doesn't have any permits, doesn't have a zoning certificate or permit to host this type of event. So, Mark Perfect had recommended to the sheriff's office, denial.
Are they in the process of applying?
I, I don't know where they are in terms of, let me see if I can see.
The residence itself is a private residence. The initial location of the catering permit had applied for was for a wedding, which is not zoned to hold the size of wedding that they initially applied for. The week prior, we had the same issue. They moved to a private residence due to trying to move this event to a private residence near the event center that was initially applied for planning and development is recommending non-approval, well, not meeting theirs, because having regular large-scale events at a private residence would then force them to need to go through the zoning process.
Okay.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to deny the catering permit for Watson's Mystery Cafe and Spirits as identified on the agenda. Authorize the chairman to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
Okay. You've heard the motion. For the discussion. Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay. Next up, we have alcohol licenses.
Catering permits.
Catering permits and alcohol licenses. That's right.
We're Holland's, we're Brews.
Right. You're applying for a new one?
Yeah, we're applying for the beer and wine. We were approved by the state for retail. We wanted these special events, like weddings and, you know, local community events. This is something we do on a daily basis. It is my understanding through the state that I cannot open and pour for you, but I can sell you a can, or I can sell you a bottle. That's what we are approved for, so.
Okay. Where are they on the, the list here?
Under section D, but we recommend approving remaining licenses.
Holland's Bites and Brews.
Yeah, this is the one we talked about, about the, yeah.
All right. Well, appreciate you coming.
Yeah. We had a long discussion about you.
I, it's been a journey.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on any of the alcohol licenses or catering permits?
I'm good with what they're trying to accomplish there, so I'll move to approve the remaining alcohol licenses listed on the agenda, including twelve catering permits, two new licenses, two license transfers, six license renewals, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Do we have a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay. You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Good luck with your business.
Good luck.
Good luck. Okay. We have with us our distinguished clerk of the court, Mr. Phil McGrane.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the only things, no, obviously, you guys are well aware, gearing up for all the budget presentations and everything, and combing through the numbers, so we've been having lots of meetings trying to get things in order so that it'll work smoothly for all of you. This week.
Good idea.
Thanks.
Trent's done a great job. Compiled like a one-pager for us.
Trying to distill it down. And we've identified a few things in the budget that we'll be highlighting for you where I think there's some, some room to address, a couple of things. We've also been.
We've also identified a few items.
I'm sure you have. The commissioner back, you've mentioned the PD's, the public defense money, right? So, we're working, trying to best understand how that's going to work. Ida Bailey has been contracted by the Public Defense Commission, so we're communicating with them about what the numbers will be reported, so they're double-checking everything for the tax commission in terms of how that money's going to flow. So, there's still a lot of questions in terms of how that.
The numbers that I have seen is from the Idaho Association of Counties with Mr. Seth, because they were relying on him. Because they have, they have some weird formula of it.
And they got them from us. It's the, but the, the, the Public Defender's Office. It's, and I think there will be a good discussion at commissioners and clerks about this, you know? I've already had a few conversations, because basically looking at the operating budget of the Public Defender's Office minus the public defense grant money, right? That doesn't get included in that budgetary figure.
But that number was a two thousand and twenty number, wasn't it, on fiscal year, wasn't a twenty-one number?
I, I think that's what's being audited, is checking which year, what numbers. The other thing, though, that's been highlighted in one of the conversations is it doesn't include any sort of capital infrastructure funding, right? Operations, supports, Public Defender's Office, but none of, it really was looking at wages and supplies, and, you know, computer equipment, whatnot, but not what it actually costs to run the whole Public Defender's Office. And so, I think that's going to be an interesting conversation as to whether this was, in fact, sufficiently funded, and I think other counties have identified that as well, you know, for the state to take on that portion. So, I think that's some of the evaluation of the funding.
It should be noted that that bill was cobbled together in the last few days of the legislature, so they didn't have enough time to go through all that.
And I think it kind of reflects that, right? And it also, there was big issues like indigent.
Right.
Plugged into that. So, we're, again, what we're trying to do is figure out, at least for the next fiscal year, what that, I think long-term, there's going to be, and from what I'm already hearing is likely amendments to the bill for the very reasons that you just noted, right? Because it may not adequately address the actual needs, but trying to figure out in terms of revenue what that'll mean for this upcoming budget.
Yeah. So, our main thing is what's the revenue this year?
Yeah. Right now, we're kind of myopically focused on year one, and we'll figure out the rest as it, it kind of goes down, because I think there's going to be.
Well, I'm glad we've got a whole room full of smart people on the first floor to figure that out.
Yeah, no, I think, it'll be good. I, I will be at commissioners and clerks, along with Trent and Katie, and this is part of our transition then, this week, so we'll be out there. I think you'll be there.
I'll be there partially, yes. Okay. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. I'll entertain a motion on the claims journal.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to authorize payment of claims on the claims journal dated June third, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second that.
Okay. You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next up, we have personnel actions. May I have a motion on personnel actions?
I move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda, and that the summary sheet remain on file in the commissioner's office.
I'll second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Bob isn't here, is, oh, Brad is.
Morning.
Brad's got us a good report, then, I'm sure.
Yeah, it's about you to get crazy in our office, so we've sent out two hundred and twenty thousand assessment notices. I'm sure you've probably got yours in the mail.
I got one. It's more than thirty-one percent, I might.
I know.
How'd you like the insert?
Oh, the insert was great.
So, perfect.
Yeah.
So, uh, at this point, we're experiencing a little higher volume of calls and, uh, appeals so far. We're up to twelve value appeals right now, so it is, uh, showing more signs of the frequency than last year. And, um,
I think we're gonna, I think we're gonna see more of that, because last year it was completely different. We were in the middle of a huge uptick, and most people going, oh, wait, my, my property is worth more than, than what you said. But now it's, market's slowing down a little bit, I think.
Yeah, and our lean day's January first, so we're still, I mean, it was still pretty aggressive at that point. So we are starting to see some signs of things kind of changing, but as far as this value. But I think a lot of people, they had the big increase last year, and, and then to top it off with another huge increase, uh, is a lot for them to swallow. And then, um, Candy County, I mean, they, they were up forty percent increases over there on average, so they're even, um, pushing their values even more than us. So, but overall, it's pretty good. We're hoping in the next couple of days to get the tax estimator out, which is really nice, because if everyone's going up, then there's a good chance those levies will be pushed down. So, and this is a good opportunity for people, they can plug in basically information, their value, and it'll basically give them an estimated tax. And usually, as, uh, they might experience a thirty percent increase, but they'll notice that their taxes are not gonna go up that much. So it's a nice tool to kind of help bring people down a little bit.
And that's on your website?
Uh, as soon as the Tax Commission releases it, they're doing the final, uh, adjustments right now. We'll put a link on our website to the Tax Commission, so.
Okay, will you make sure Elizabeth gets that?
Yes, yeah. And it'll be a good social media broadcast, too, so. But other than that, we're just plugging away.
Well, that, uh, that's good, and I appreciate, uh, last year, we, we asked you to be prepared with your appraisers to work with the people who did file a notice, and we were able to note, to knock those down for the board legalization, which was good, and I hope we can do the same thing this year.
Yeah, our appraisers are, I mean, they're on a go and constantly with the homeowners and commercial property owners, too, working with them and, uh, doing what they can, so.
Well, great, great. Anything else, Brad?
Um, no, we got the tax cancellations on the next item.
Yes.
If you want to jump into that.
Yeah, we'll jump into the tax cancellations. However, the tax cancellations is a, is a statutory term, because it doesn't, it doesn't cancel our taxes, it reduces it. Thank you. Do we have a motion on the tax cancellations?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the tax cancellations as listed on the agenda, which includes three tax cancellations for twenty-twenty and eight tax cancellations for twenty-twenty-one, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. Thank you, Brad. Thank you. Okay, we have with us today our distinguished, uh, treasurer, Beth.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Um, our focus right now is tax collections. Um, we're less than fourteen days away from the due date, and there is a holiday between now and then. Um, so that's our priority, given these tax cancellations I see on here. We'll get those processed promptly, um, because what that means is that the notices have gone out at a higher amount. Um, so we'll promptly process these so that the taxpayer knows the new tax liability. Um, also before you is a request to waive late charge and interest. Um, I will note that this taxpayer has paid these amounts. Um, so it wa, it was after the payment of these amounts that was determined that there was a county error. Um, so I, I'd recommend approval of that, in which case we would refund the taxpayer. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? And inasmuch as it is a county error, they, uh, they are owed a refund. All right, so I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the waiver of late charges and interest for the twenty-twenty-one property rule as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next up, we have, uh, interim event agreements, commercial exhibitor agreements, and concessionaire agreements for Expo Idaho. Is there any question or discussions on the various agreements?
Well, but did we do the approval of minutes?
Yes, we did.
So I'll,
No, it didn't.
I'll go ahead and move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Uh, motion carries. Now we have interim agreements. Thank you, Commissioner.
Sure, I'll go ahead and move to approve the one interim event agreement, seven commercial exhibitor agreements, and six concessionaire agreements, including pronto pups.
We have three pronto pups.
As listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Second.
Okay.
What we all live for, right? Pronto pups once you.
The pronto pup, yeah. Okay, uh, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Uh, we have, uh, the Barber Park and Event Center. We have four agreements. Do we have a motion for the Barber Park Education and Event Center agreements?
I move to approve the four Barber Park Education and Event Center agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Uh, we have, uh, we'll now take up agreements. Is there any discussion on the various agreements that we have before us?
No, Mr. Chair, I guess just the one. I don't see the sheriff, anyone from the sheriff's office here, but, uh, we probably want to circle back with them. I think Telmate was the one that we were going to go out and rebid, so I'm not sure why. It's just on here to roll it forward.
Is, uh, Steve Rutherford, uh, I asked him to contact the Sheriff's Department about that. Steve, are you on there?
What about Mr. Perkins?
I am here. Uh, I'm here from the cloud.
Any, any word back on the Telmate contract?
No, I have not yet received a response back from, uh, Terry Durden.
Uh, Mr. Perkins?
I heard some discussion that there was gonna be, uh, uh, maybe going out for a, uh, re-proposal for this, but haven't heard anything as of late.
Well, I suggest then that we pull it and we,
Okay.
I'll go ahead and make a, um, motion to, um, approve five agreements as listed on the agenda and exclude one, Agreement one-four-zero-three-nine-dash-one-dash-two-two. Authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
All right, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay.
I'm sorry, are we tabling the Sheriff's Agreement? Okay, to what date? To next, to the fourteenth?
Open Business Meeting, if we can, uh, if we can get the information we need.
So we'll table it to the fourteenth?
Yeah.
I'll include that in my motion.
Yep. All right, is there any further discussion then on, on the motions? Hearing none, uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries, and then that agreement is tabled to the fourteenth. Agreement number one-four-zero-three-nine-dash-one-two-two. Okay, uh, we're in recess. Well, good morning. Today is Monday, June the sixth. Uh, the time is, uh, nine-thirty-five. Uh, the Board of Commissioners, sitting as a Board of Emergency Medical Services, is in session to conduct its weekly Open Business Meeting. All three Commissioners are present. Also with us are,
Sean Rain, paramedics.
Phil McGrane, car.
And IT guy. Uh, Madam Clerk, are there, uh, any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay, may I have a motion on the Claims Journal?
Mr. Chair, I move to authorize payment of claims as listed on the Claims Journal dated June third, twenty-twenty-two regarding EMS expenditures.
I'll second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion on the personnel actions.
I move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda and that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's office.
I'll second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, now we've got our award-winning director, if you could give us an update.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, good morning. Um, not much of an update today. Uh, COVID is remaining about the same, we've just seen about three cases a day. Um, we did have several personnel out last week. That's, that situation has improved, so, um, just kind of monitoring that situation. Um, outside of that, we have, uh, town hall scheduled tomorrow through Friday to talk to our staff about the, the schedule change that'll be coming up January first, so we'll be doing that, and that's about all I have for you today.
So three per day, that's just, that, that's pretty much an average for the last, uh, when we're not surging and all that.
Correct.
Now, I've just read an article that, uh, that this new variant is causing more infections, but it's, there's, it's not causing any increases in hospitalizations or deaths. Is that what you're hearing?
Not in deaths, we are seeing some hospitalizations from it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're going up, but we haven't seen the deaths correlate with that yet. It is, uh, I read an article that, uh, it is certainly more contagious, and, uh, even case counts in Idaho are, are, have been on the rise. I think part of the difficulty that we see now is really the amount of home testing that is being done. You know, people don't necessarily call their health district to say that they have a positive test result. They just isolate at home and, and do what they're supposed to do. So I think some of that data is gonna be a little bit harder to track as we go forward, but we'll certainly still have, um, you know, hospitalizations and, and that kind of data that we can look into.
But if we stick to this, like, three per day, that's pretty much just the average.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else for us?
That is it.
How are you feeling about the town hall?
Good, yeah. Just, uh, get in front of folks and explain, you know, the, the why and, and how and all that kind of stuff, so.
Yeah.
Still feeling like you're gonna lose some folks?
I'm, I'm sure that we, that, that we will have some folks that just won't be able to do that schedule for a variety of reasons, and, and we're aware of those, you know. Um, childcare, you know, that's, uh, becomes more difficult for a single parent. Um, we have reached out to our fire department, uh, members in, in access, because obviously they have a lot of single parents and they're doing forty-eight solid hours. And so they have, you know, people have, have managed to figure it out over there, but it's so, it's such a new thing for us to think about some kind of, uh, alternate schedule that, uh, that's part of the difficulty.
Okay, all right. Well, is there any other, other, anything else we need to be, be proud of for the Board?
No, sir.
All right, well, we're in recess.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.